To the Swan County Board, I'm sorry. Swan County Board and County Commissioner meeting for August 2nd, 2022. At this time, I'd like to get Mr. Stapleton to do the invocation. Everybody stand please.
The Board is coming for you tonight to do the work of the county. Ask you to give us wisdom and guidance. During this time of year, I ask you to, as we come into this next week, to please put your hands on the families and children of this county as they make their way back to school. And a lot of youngsters, little girls and boys, it's going to be starting. Their very first year, we ask you to please be with them as they're scared and their parents are scared for them also. Just please watch them, watch after them. Please help us as adults and leaders to slow this traffic down and be respectful and give everyone time. It's just patience, a little bit of patience we ask. As always, we ask you to continue to watch our approach responders and our ability to press and prevent.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all.
Moving ahead to approval of minutes for the July 19th, 2022 regular board meeting. Is there any discussion or advice or approval?
Mr. Chairman, I have an item to address in the minutes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. On page 71 of the proposed minutes, excuse me, page 371, last line is incomplete. Can you carry over, Mr. Burton?
Discussion is on the application and how private citizens' data would supposedly be. Yeah. Okay, but it's not online. Okay, no.
Mr. Chairman, I'll withdraw the question.
So no issues. You're right.
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Motion by Commissioner Stapleton. Second by Mr. Fleming. All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign.
So are you motion to second that? Sorry.
What's that?
Okay, who's seconded?
Uh, Mr. Fleming.
Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda, items two through 10. Is there any discussion or wish to come through?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just point out, there's an enabling resolution associated with number five that you want to add.
So what do you need, Mr. Harris?
I just need a motion for approval on all these consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, some more. Motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We've got some public carry here. We have to do it 505, so I'm gonna skip ahead to an adoption of a resolution, the Swan Valley Electric Cooperative, supporting affordable and reliable high-speed internet through Swan County. Mr. John Livel, if you would please. Welcome. Name of the rest of the record, please.
Hey, I'm John Livel, 9465, 129th Drive, here in Myville. And thank you for letting me come in tonight. Last Tuesday, or this past, yeah, a week ago today, Swan Valley Electric Cooperative announces plans to construct fiber optic network throughout our electric system. And a lot of the folks, you gentlemen, were in the room. And we appreciate you for being there. I think it made it kind of a special event. One that doesn't come along too often, I think. But anyway, the network will enhance the flow of data used to detect faults and control devices throughout the system. It'll shorten power outage response times, improve system security, reliable reliability and resilience. SBC also plans to enable fiber optic cable installed for the project with background of a much wider network, capable of delivering 100% fiber-to-the-home high-speed internet service to all SBC consumer owners. That service will be provided by Rapid Fiber Internet LLC, and that's a newly formed subsidiary of the Co-op. Rapid Fiber Internet will offer consumers access to upload and download speeds up to 2 gigabytes per second. And that will give Swan County residents and businesses access to same opportunities in areas of education, telemedicine, employment and entertainment as people in more populated areas have. So construction of the network is expected to begin in the second quarter next year. And we hope to get the first people, first customers going third quarter next year. So hopefully about a year, we'll have people up and running. Swan Valley Electric Cooperative is consumer-owned, and I hope we have earned a reputation for being community-centered organization. And we know all of you commissioners share our commitment to the well-being of our members in Swan County. And we very much value your resolution and support the Co-op's efforts to make affordable and reliable high-speed internet available to them all. Maybe before we go beyond, if I could just introduce two of our board members from the county. This is Jerry Goff. This is D.B. Robertson. So our board is obviously instrumental in making this go ahead with this project.
Well, we're excited to have you and glad that, uh, glad that it's, it's, it's gonna really help the county a lot. So we're, we're particular to you, so. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question. I wasn't able to attend this at the time. But if this coincided with the power, when the power was off, did that, and that system go out too?
Well, it'll be, it'll be separate. It could, you know, depending on, it, it, where we have our power on the lines, it'll be on the lines with it in a different space. If we're underground, it'll be underground. So it, it will be, you know, somewhat vulnerable to the same hazards as we get with electric lines.
Well, I, I know that makes sense, but you know, according to you, if the power go out, you can't use it. But some people got general, general access.
Yes.
And you have to take the user.
Yes.
Mr. Burton.
Mr. Fleming, I feel confident in God as much as it goes out now. I want to just thank you all, though. It's a, it's a big undertaking, a lot of money. I want to really appreciate your board members for supporting. I mean, absolutely, they had to get on board. And they recognize that the dead load, that service that you're taking to make it happen upfront. And I'm just grateful that you, that you see the vision and are able to make something happen for Swan County and for surrounding counties. It's not just Swan County.
Yes, it's the Fayette, Hamilton, and then also northern part of Columbia. So it's pretty much northern by, yeah. So you, you mentioned that, Dale, we will be trying to get any and all grants that are available from the federal government and from the state government. That's where I think your resolution will help us. Hopefully, you know, based on your support, they will, they'll see the support of the community and provides itself, and that'll, that'll give us a good meg up there for whoever's dealing with that.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes, sir. I just, again, I echo a little bit what Mr. Stapleton said. Appreciate you and the board members from Swan Valley and what you all do in the community, but also taking on the debt. I think it's a $93 million project estimated to provide that to, like you said, not just Swan County, but all the areas and counties that you serve. I also wanted to say to the public, the, the abbreviation, LTVT, our local technology planning team, Shannon's here and Jimmy Norris here. We met last week. That's a board that you guys are grateful to, grateful to be appointed. Me too. Oh, we met last week, and, and that's to, to, to try to help facilitate some of the, some of the funding potential from, you know, resources. But one thing that, that committee is trying to figure out ways to get the public to do is the speed test. That, I mean, we've seen a little bit on Facebook. I think Jimmy's got it on his page. I know Swan Valley's got it on their page. We need those speed tests done by all residents throughout counties. You know, your kids can do it. It's pretty easy. It'll take literally maybe a minute to do it. You can go sit in your recliner from your phone or your tablet or whatever. But we need to try to figure out ways to encourage all of the public in Swan County to, and surrounding counties, to do that speed test. The DEO, Shannon?
Yes, sir.
DEO is, that's one of the requirements. We need to get it 10%. And then you get 10%, and we're at 4, 4.3, or 3. So we, you know, you never want to log on, do the speed test. If you can't find it, uh.
There's a link? Yeah. It's linked to on Jimmy's.
Jimmy's Facebook page, Swan Valley's Facebook page. And I don't, any, are there any other folks that do not have social media? Are there any other outlets on, like a website link where they could get?
I haven't seen what it said with the state agency. Does the Office of Broadband, that's where we link to?
Yes. Shannon, do you remember that address?
No, off the top of my head, but it is on the Office of, the DEO Office of Broadband has a link on their website to do the speed test.
Or you can go to swanityevo.com/speetest.
Or you can go to Swan, to our website, the Co-op's, and there's a big banner right on the front. And that'll link it to that, that page. And I bet you're all, it'll be about a week, and the LLC will have its own webpage. That's in development, and that'll be up front as well. Anybody needs any other information, have a call to the Co-op and let them know that you see it. But thank you for your support.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
And to add one more thing to that. Not only is it a great service you've got to be offering, but it creates more jobs, some more as well.
I think so, yes, sir.
Absolutely. Again, what do you want to do on that, that announcement? I'm pretty sure, I heard they said they were gonna start this project in District 1.
I mean, I heard this is the one, so I'm all for it.
No, it's, I don't care whether it's already, it needs to happen. It needs to happen all the time. And I just think that, like all the commissioners said, it's, it's one thing, the board members sitting here looking at it. And a lot of the, well, I'll be honest with you. The gentleman you had speaking there that day, he really broke it down in terms of, I don't know, to understand. So it's deciding time.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're gonna move back to 505 or soon thereafter, item number 11. 505 or soon thereafter, as matter can be heard over a public hearing, in compliance with section 129.06 Florida statutes, undersigned budget office officer for the board and county commissioner of Swan County, Florida, made prepared to follow budget amendments to reflect authorization and use of fund balances, preserve contingency and unanticipated revenues for program purchases and appropriate for those purposes said funds for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022. And said usages are in excess of the original or previously amended budget. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Y'all did not make a motion on that.
Oh, we did, we did. Sorry.
It's all right.
I need to back up just a minute here, y'all, and adopt the resolution, so.
Sorry.
Item 13. Motion by Commissioner Fleming. Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Sorry. Mr. Dentry, go ahead.
We have one amendment we want to go and take care of on the fund forfeiture fund. We're calling it, still, a little off that job for the grant sheriff's office. And this is that first installment for them, $150,000 to pass through to sheriff's office.
Any questions to the staff?
No, sir.
Come on. But I guess to talk to you. At this time, I'll look in the floor for public comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Is there any board discussion? Just need a motion on? Motion by Commissioner Stapleton. Second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Dentry. Item number 12, at 505 or soon thereafter, as matter can be heard, open a public hearing and consider applying for small cities community development block grant, economic development assistance in the amount of $6,706, about $6,758,000 in Swan. Mr. Dentry.
Good evening, my name is David Fox of the Fred Fox Enterprise. This is an advertised second public hearing for a fiscal year 2021, '22 CUG application cycle in the economic development category. Swan County is looking at applying to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for a federal fiscal year 2021, '22 small cities community development block grant for a minimum of $1.5 million in economic development category. The county is also seeking a waiver to the state of Florida's small cities CUG program to the Florida Administration Code to exceed the $1.5 million max. The total request amount will be $6,758,000. Activities are meant to estimate a percent of benefits to low-income person, which Swan County is applying for, as follows. You're gonna meet the 50% low-income benefit requirement based on that. Activity number and name, number 17B, wastewater sewer treatment plant activity. The base request is $825,000. Additional CUG waiver request will be $3,189,000. So the total CUG request in the room is $4,000,014,000. You see 51% LMI benefit. 17B wastewater sewer spray field. The base request CUG is $300,000. The additional CUG waiver request approved is $1,180,000. The total CUG request will be $1,480,000 for wastewater sewer spray field. Once again, I'll meet at least 200% of low-income benefit. 17B engineering, CUG base request is $255,000. Additional CUG waiver request is $889,000. Total CUG request for engineering will be $1,814,000. 21A administration, CUG base request $120,000. There's no additional CUG waiver request for administration. Total CUG request $120,000 for administration. So the total request is gonna be a base maximum $1.5 million total. And then for additional CUG waiver request of $5,258,000, or total CUG request for community development block grant request of $6,758,000. Project will undertake to construct a new wastewater treatment plant and a wastewater treatment plant spray field in certain industries which are located on, or would be located at the Swan County Economic Development Catalyst Site. Project wastewater treatment plant and spray field included in the catalyst site located on the north side of US Highway 90, just west of the intersection of US Highway 90 and Interstate 10. The new wastewater treatment plant will have a 175,000 gallon per day capacity. Include a sludge drying bed, building, generator, necessary electrical equipment, as well as the yard piping and parking. The wastewater fluid spray field will consist of irrigation pump, the wastewater treatment plant irrigation system, a line, wet, weather basin, electrical, and 200 linear feet of irrigation piping from the wastewater treatment plant to the spray field. The wastewater treatment plant and spray field required to allow for the expansion of the existing sawmill facility, creating additional 175 new full-time program jobs. Just so the project's infrastructure required, three additional companies located to operations at Swan County Economic Development Catalyst Site. The county's division of three companies are manufacturer of clean tech in nature and is currently unable to disclose themselves about these properties. Developer number one, this company is creating additional new laws line. As the new law established, the general will add 75 new employees and expand the sawmill workforce 250 within 12 months. Developer number two will create 33 new jobs within 12 months. Their total drop job creation is 75 jobs by year three. Developer number three will create 110 new jobs within 12 months. Their total creation over period is 133 jobs by year three. And developer number four will create 10 new jobs within 12 months to project completion. Proposed improvements are required mineral restructure necessary for the creation of initial 248 new jobs at the Swan County Economic Development Catalyst Site. This will create additional 145 jobs for a total of 393 new jobs. A minimum of 200 new full-time creation will be held for persons of low-income households. All four of the job creation businesses are located, or would be located within the Swan County Economic Development Catalyst Site. And the whole site is in the incorporated Swan County. The Swan County construction will take approximately 30 months to the property complete, including environmental review, bidding, construction and grant closure. Pass it back to the chairman for opening up a public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. At this time, Mr. Perry, do you need this one?
If anybody anticipates getting up, I don't see a whole lot of hands jumping up right now. But if anybody does anticipate, please try to be sworn. Mr. Chairman, no response.
Seeing none, I'll open the floor to public comment. Anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is there any discussion left, or?
I got a question. Um, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fox, can you, for lack of better words, dumb this down for me? Um, I'm a little confused. We're doing all this because it's statutorily required that we do this?
The requirement is, like you did that previous housing grant, you've gotta have two public carries.
I got it.
So you had one previously, additional that covered both the housing application and, and then the second step before you apply, you've gotta have the second public during letting the public know what you're looking at doing. At this point, you're looking at possibly applying for a base grant of $1.5 million and getting a waiver to get up to $6,758,000 of grant claims.
The 1.5 we have historically applied for, actually?
The 1.5, you've done EDs before, I don't know exactly. I think it was over 1.5. At that time, they didn't have the maximum now. This went in about, I'd say, three or four years ago. Maybe a little further than that. But the maximum right now is 1.5. But they do consider and have approved waivers in the past to exceed that 1.5 under the economic development category. So we're just gonna request the additional and see what comes and happens.
I got you. Okay. And, and these items here, that's what we're telling DEO?
You've gotta create the jobs. And I think it will be the county, but you will have to have, the job creator has to create the jobs for the grant agreement.
I didn't know if all this stuff had something to do with the housing stuff.
It's, it's a separate category, but it's the same program.
I got you.
What do you need, Mr. Fox? There's a resol, you want to make an approval scope of work?
We have a resolution. We amend the after, after this public hearing, actually.
Yes, sir. I just need to close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Thank you, very much.
At this time, I'll close the public hearing.
No, I'll close the public hearing, just, you need to go ahead and have the vote on it, then close the, close the hearing. You've closed up public comment. But please have your vote first before you close the meeting.
The resolution, or you talked about the resolution? Because it's like.
It's just separate. The resolution, the resolution is, they'll do the same thing. They wanted to approve the scope work. They can do that, they're not required to, but they are required to do the resolution, probably submit the application.
All right, I don't know if I'm gonna be sworn in, but commissioners, I'm just gonna tell you one thing. That we have done historically, since these entities are somewhat identified in here, is we have created a participating party agreement as well. That facilitates the audit and everything else that occurs with the companies later on, creation of the jobs that they, that will be necessary, that will be necessitated in order for us to comply with the terms that we're on. There is a signing sheet going out here that will sign it. Do you want to vote on the scope?
On the scope of work. I want to make sure that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just take the scope.
I want the scope of work. Well, he not like the scope.
Well, he said we don't have to vote on that.
But we have. We want to have that.
It would be a dirty vote.
The attorney wants it approved.
Okay.
The allegations are brutal.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Fleming. Second by Commissioner Stapleton. All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. At least I don't feel so bad. At this time, we're gonna move item 17 ahead of the rest of, because Mr. Jennifer Green is here with Liberty Partners. I'm sorry, I mentioned it by surprise here. I'm trying to get you finished with your feedback. So if you want, we'll discuss with possible board action proposal for Liberty Partners when some incident will be ruled. Did you want to speak, or did you just want to take questions?
I'm happy to, sir. I haven't answered any questions, but I think you all have a copy of the proposal. I would make one point that affirming these Liberty Partners of Tallahassee, we are offering, it's all the same name. Just make sure you get your name.
And your name on the address, Fox, here.
Jennifer Green, and the address is 393 U. Lane in Tallahassee. But again, happy to answer the question, Mr. Jennifer.
Well, I've been over to talk to you several times, so I'll do it. Anybody else got any questions?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm good. I was not present at the last meeting, but I was present at the meeting before that when we spoke and I'm answering most of my questions.
Chairman, I spoke with a guy at home. I agree with your conversation, huh? You will?
I still regret that I couldn't speak to him at home as well. Probably get wrong there more recently.
Answered a lot of questions, Mr. Fox.
With that, if there's not any further discussion, can I get a motion for approval?
I'm moved.
Motion by Commissioner Land. Second by Commissioner Stapleton. All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm assuming our point of contact with Mr. Harris. We'll be talking to him instead of him.
Thank you, that's a compliment.
Item number 14, approval of an enacting resolution to apply for waiver requests and submit application for CDVG ED grant in the amount of $6,758,000. Motion by Commissioner Stapleton. Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor, aye. All, all opposed, same sign. Amendments.
Mr. Chairman, nothing, not there at all. Mrs. Green, you and Staff, if you want to, if you believe. I always like to point that out to folks that have traveled far along ways and want to sit here and.
Thank you. Item number 15, discuss with possible board action award of bid to 2022-31, which timber sale of 63.41 acres of mixed trees located at the Swan County Catalyst Site. Open on 7/26/22. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, I think that maybe we would be remiss if we didn't consider the next item at the same time, because that's the one that really, I think, has a substantive effect on any decision on clearing. Although clearing, the timber removal would typically take place first. But the numbers that we received on the removal of stumps and clearing at the site are fairly substantial. I haven't spoken to all of you, but if you take a look at those numbers on the next item, 16, this is for possibility of clearing that 62 or 6 acres out there at the Catalyst Site. So I'm just suggesting that my thinking, I didn't look at both of these at the same time before you made the decision.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Land.
I, and I would agree with what Mr. Harris said. I mean, it's kind of going hand in hand together. My recommendation would be, and I did look at those numbers, and you're located for $4 million to clear and grow and de-stalk. But what I would recommend is to go and, you know, to the board, and it's totally up to you guys. I, I would offer the idea of going ahead and settling the timber and removing that and hold off on clearing and growing at this time. For me, I think it does, my idea, my thinking is it does two things for you. One, it allows these companies that bid an opportunity to see the, see the floor, to, to see the property for what, what's, what's left, so to speak, versus, you know, they bid this prior to the timber harvest. bid this prior to the timber harvest, so there may be some assumptions that they bid that are unknown. Um, but I would, I would harvest the timber and leave, and just leave it alone for a year, and, and let some dry out and some rotting occur in the event that we have an interested party on some of the acreage, then, you know, then at that time, we look to clear and grub into the acreage needed, you know, by a company or someone at the site, but I don't know that we need to tackle clearing and grubbing on the full sixty-something acres, you know, this year, or this, next fiscal year, directly behind the timber harvest when we have no end user on the radar. I would, I would harvest it and encourage the timber harvester to leave as little debris as possible, and then, those are the, that's just my opinion.
Well, I, I called around and got, I don't, I don't agree with you. I called around and checked on this timber price, and we only had one, one bidder on the timber, and those are pretty good numbers on the timber sale.
Correct.
At the current time, so I'm in favor of, uh, cut the wood and then revisit and stump it all over again.
Yeah, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, maybe you, we have an interest in, just being knowledgeable with that, and certain numbers within that. Yeah, we get a, we get a, a company comes in and says, hey, we'd like to take down twenty acres of that, well, what twenty? And then we get the dress, okay, what do you want us to do to it? You see what it looks like now, you want, you know, you want us to take that, or do you want the wood, or? And then we, you know, if they're a little heated with, and hired, we either RFP on this twenty acres, more than twenty acres, and, and in addition to, give us, well, even bid it all, and put them there. So just a moment, this is clear.
Any other discussion?
You're sitting in the back, Luke.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Fleming.
I'm not gonna disagree, but I'm not saying we're forced to really do it, clear.
We aren't.
We have, we have pushed.
We're not.
We're relying on that.
We're not under, we're just kind of, I don't know.
We should go on to that. Yes, sir. Uh, and, and I understand that some prices are higher than I would expect it to, but I would like, if you could keep in mind the profit from the timber sale in relation to when you have to stump the property, because when the cubs come in, they're not looking to pay to stump it, well, they're looking for a side, a piece of property, so that we can keep in mind that we're making money off of the timber sale, so let's, when we start negotiations, not think that maybe they have carried all that up, because, because once it's sold, we'll forgive, we mean, all that money off of it, we're not thinking we're gonna get a lot of gloves, we're telling them they got took care of all that, you know what I mean?
Well, you know, we can come back, revisit that stump.
Right, and I, and I agree with what you're saying, I just wanna keep that in mind, that when it comes to stumping and grubbing, we're gonna make a profit off of this, so we don't want to forgive that.
That's what we're saying.
I can tell you right now, you haven't made a profit on anything.
No, we haven't.
But you're using all those, all the infrastructure we built out there.
We're talking about on that side, on the west side of the road. We're not counting the east side. I, I know we're probably gonna need some cleared property soon, however, the way, we've got two bids in front of us right now, that's what I got turned in in the next week, uh, and that's what it comes to, so just say that. Now, not that we'll get it, because a thousand other people have bid in that, but that's just what they're gonna be looking for. They're not gonna be looking for, as you know, one of the projects in front of us right now, one of the reasons they're here is because the bad issue came up, and they told the company they had to handle that, you know what I mean? So, just let us keep it, that's all.
Mr. Fleming.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add, um, I'm a little bit of agreement with, um, opportunity, I don't, I wanna get the trees, obviously, get the timber harvested, but I don't wanna feel like blowing it off out there, and that's what it's gonna look like, once they cut the timber, it's gonna be filed, so I, I'll offer this. If you choose that you don't wanna spend the money on the de-stump, and I completely understand that's a big problem, but I would still like to change, come back and have it raped, have all of it burnt, and then choose to have it chopped, have it chopper run over, uh, and keep it maintained, at least until the time that we de-stump it, because you don't have piles, you know, you don't have other stuff, you don't have piles of stuff out there, we got people that we got coming to the family looking at things, and, you know, I just, I wanna, we are professional, and I, I want to say that in a way, at this point, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman, why don't we, why don't we, I agree with what he said, I don't like the bomb either.
Well, you know, the grownups who's cutting that, so when they get through it, it's towards earth.
I mean, if he's, if he's gonna ship it, I'm assuming he's gonna not leave much, but why don't we do this?
We just look at it.
Why don't we look at it after it's cut, and then we say, hey, that looks kinda rough, can we get a RFP to get someone, or rake it and burn the piles, and by that time, it'll be three, four months afterwards anyway, and it'll be a little drier, and it'll burn better, and then we rake it and leave it, you know, that stump's raw, these stumps there for now, and then worry about them in a later day, they, they're dried out, and all of it a little bit, and hopefully do clean it up and rake it, if it needs it after next, when, I don't know, if they'll leave them in a chip, but they ain't gonna be money, then let's get it up, I agree, thanks for talking about that.
Yeah, that's fine, you know, just come, you didn't do nothing, timber harvest.
No, I'm, I'm good with that, I just want us to have it the best it can without being, if, if we're so choosing.
Mr. North, I'm, I'm sorry. Mr. North, a point, on the, on the budgetary side, on the proceeds for the timber sale, do, can we, this is a question, can we allocate those funds?
Set aside for that purpose.
Well, I would say instead of aside, to pay on that line of credit, they'll pay an interest on the bullet, that's another good idea, too, to set aside for, to go directly back into that site, one of those two options.
I would like to see it go back to, to the side.
That's.
You don't, like you said, we got an application, not for example, we're getting.
And you want to. So, Mr. Harris, can we line itemize the proceeds, revenue from the timber sale to be a method back in.
Well, the truth is, it's gonna go into general, it'll become general revenue, is what's gonna happen, and we can, we can account for it, and give you a number in the bracket, we can do that, that's not a problem.
That might make the pill a little easy to swallow, when we go to, we're cleared.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, yes. So we, so we use the funds to help pay the stump.
Appreciate you, Mr. Fox, thank you. Any further discussion, or can I get a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
Number sixteen, or fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah.
Make sure.
I moved to approve the timber sale, if the home bidder, they were going with the prices, that's the one.
Motion by Commissioner Lamb.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hill, all in favor, I.
All.
All opposed, same sign.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Eighteen, discuss with possible board action award of bid, twenty-two-two dash thirty-two for clearing and grubbing of the sixty-three point four one acre site that we just spoke about at Catalyst Site, open on seven twenty-six twenty-two. Mr. Harris.
Well, it sounds like you've got an option to reject all bids, that's for the fourth one.
Yes, sir. Any discussion? Can I get a motion to approve? Uh, there's, motion by Commissioner Lamb. Second by Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman. How we, you said a motion to approve, I want to clarify, as we're talking along there, you didn't say the word reject all bids.
Reject all bids.
So, if you would, please clarify, make sure, clear on that. I know that's what we said was the option, but when you said it out loud, you didn't come out.
I understand. Nothing.
I moved to reject all bids at this time on clearing and grubbing at Catalyst Site.
Motion by Commissioner Lamb.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor, I.
All.
All opposed, same sign.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Eighteen, discuss with possible board action ranking of roads for FDOT, scrap and scot for, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Where the letter went, it's put in here, but, did you get the letter? DOT. Uh, this is a good one. In any event, we, we received an email about two weeks ago, where DOT takes all of our scrap and scot projects, we submit the ranking, um, by the board. In fact, what I gave you when I walked in here is a copy of that ranking. DOT, um, essentially said that, for now, uh, they believe that County Road one thirty-seven, the reconstruction of that is ranking higher than the destruction of one hundred and eighty-four. They suggested that we communicate to them that we are re-ranking them to align the board's decision with their decision, based on their scoring criteria. So that's why this is back in writing now.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and force my displeasure with the whole thing, because that was not really supposed to get done, and DOT seen that it was, uh, better to do something different, and so I'm not gonna cross, I'm not gonna stand in the way of other county getting something versus nothing, so I'm gonna lay my weapons aside and just, and, uh, ask the board to, to approve reranking of these roads to align with DOT.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, it appeared, coming from the communication that we received, it only affects those first two, so you'd be reversing the order. Um, County Road one thirty-seven would be your number one project, one hundred and eighty-four construction would be your number two, and then you still have, uh, forty-nine on there in County Road two fifty, the way they were presented. Mr. Chairman.
First of all, I would, uh, just like to, um, to say I appreciate your leadership. That's, that's what working for the board right there, up from this time. That's, uh, being a team player. I do wanna specify, to my knowledge, there was no outside politics, any phone calls and anything that was requested to change anything. That was their decision, as far as, hundred percent as I know. But I just wanna tell you, I appreciate that. Obviously, one thirty-seven was in vision before, and, uh, I won't offer that motion.
I'm sure you do. Uh, motion by Commissioner Stapleton.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor, I.
All.
All opposed, same sign. Motion, here.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a brief comment, um, we had a discussion today, I was in a, a discussion with DOT today, we had a status, project status updates, and during the conversation, we talked quite a bit about the fact that defunding isn't coming anywhere near to match these projects, and DOT has not announced a formal plan for trying to mitigate this problem, so I cannot tell you how it's going to affect projects that are already in the works, that are in the design, design stage right now. Um, when it comes down to bid, um, we have no idea what's gonna happen. Um, I, I would tell you some of the options that they talked about today, but none of them are great options, so I think we're enough just waiting at this point, and see what happens once we go to bid on these projects, but it is very, very difficult, even on state projects, and they're finding it's really hard, and they're going a way short on funding because things are selling play right now.
Well, just for instance, on, like, one hundred and eighty-fourth and one thirty-seven, there was one, one, two million and three million on one hundred and eighty-fourth, and four.
Yeah, I can't remember the numbers, but I'm, I'm just gonna tell you that, my whole thing we're seeing is way, way off. In fact, I got a call, um, yesterday, and I had had a similar conversation a month ago, becoming more difficult to get asphalt, um, as well, that's another big problem that's going on right now, so, um, we're gonna keep forging ahead doing what we do, but my hope is that in next year, if we don't start having problems, we can't get asphalt.
Item number nineteen, additional agenda item, approval of payment of an amount of eighty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-three cents to CSX for relocation of fiber off the cable associated with the construction of rail spur at Catalyst Site. Mr. Harris.
This was an invoice that we received late, very late, um, as, I think, all of, you know, CSX sold the railroad, this was a project that we started with CX, CSX, and then, uh, they got in the middle of selling the railroad, but this was an expense associated with relocation of fiber rock, associated with construction of that rail spur, so at this time, we're asking that we, uh, were approved payment, uh, and I need to point out that we identified a source of funding because this one be paid and ran, closed down two years ago. Um, so I would suggest that we probably need to take this from the current year contingency to pay the severance.
Which is, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lamb.
Which is still around three hundred-ish.
We haven't do much out of there. In fact, I'm not sure what you think that.
What do you do?
Yeah, it's three hundred and something.
Mr. Kirk.
Mr. Fleming.
Yeah, of course, probably, legal counsel. When we enter into these contracts, is there ever been a claim itself about time restriction?
Well, originally, the contract would have gone on in a four period of time, there's particular, it did not have any particular termination provision under the contract. When they, uh, actually quit, you know, on, on the project, it and, you know, the engineering agreement that we had at the same time, they both technically, technically became in default under the contract. Uh, however, they made a major reimbursement to the county under the initial payment that we did, and therefore, uh, when we got this bill, we might have imposed out the project in a, in a period, but we get this bill a little bit later on, and, uh, they say, well, uh, you need to pay us, you know, for this. Well, we could tell the judge, if we had to litigate over the circumstance, we could tell the judge that, uh, that they were in default, and therefore, we had to complete the project in another manner. If you recall, we completed the project, had a savings of about a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, and so if I'm going to tell the judge that, well, Judge, here's my damages, uh, my damages are I made, a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, so that's why you don't want to pursue this. The second, the second real thing is, if it had been timely, within the grant period of time, it, no question, it's, you know, a, um.
Would have been a liable expense.
Would have been a liable expense. We closed the grant, you know, go forward, and it's not like they haven't paid for the work, and actually did the work, but, and from their perspective, the underlying company that did all the moving and wiring, was, you know, was late, you know, did.
If I remember that far, I know that was what it was, the public did, we tried.
No, that's the other one.
Yeah, that's the other one.
That's over at the crossing.
That's the one that made the lose my hair.
Okay.
Well, I'm feeling, I mean, I'm feeling, I'm not excited about this one, too, but.
It's all, well, at least, at least they did something in this particular case, with the other one, they didn't do anything, they just charged us thirty-seven thousand dollars and that.
I, I don't, I don't, be there, I'm like, I don't wanna pay the bill that the other, but I mean, everyone needs to do their work in a timely fashion, and they're years down the road, I mean.
Technically, this actual limitations on this would be a five-year period of time minimum.
Understood. The first shock with this one was when they gave us refund, uh, I was forward, to be honest with you, when we received the refund from the railroad, because that didn't ever happen before. But, uh, the next shock was, I don't know, it was two years later, they sent us a bill.
It's been a little too long, found out we used too much money.
Right.
So it's like, it's like, they, they refunded us, but they didn't do the work.
No, they did do the work, the work was done, but we assumed, they've got other contracts, um, for example, they've got, we had another agreement with railroad regarding flag, we had to pay them to have a flag and stand out there all day long, making sure trains didn't ride, or anyone, or were working, and that particular agreement said that we had to pay them upfront, and that essentially, when it got to the end and they wrecked it. we had to pay them upfront, and that essentially, when it got to the end and they reconciled the actual cost with us, they would send us a refund, and that would terminate the agreement, it was over. This particular agreement didn't have that language in it, but having said that, we had to pay them, and we finished the work, and then they sent us money back, and I was shocked. Clearly, anyone's assumption would be that all of the expenses that they had incurred, they had satisfied the payment of before sending us our refund. In fact, we found out much later that that wasn't the case. They sent us an invoice and said, here, you owe this. We couldn't dispute that the work had been done with the track. What was uncomfortable was the fact that we had already closed the ground all before, and we didn't have the grant then to use or satisfy the payment.
Well, I wasn't here when he done this, so it says refunding will be sent under separate cover of five hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars.
Which we did receive.
Yeah. And that was, that was on the rail spur itself?
On the rail spur, the seven seventy contract.
Yeah. What happened, though, I can tell you the whole history on this thing, I mean, it was unbelievable, but they were originally, what they originally told us was that we could not build the rail spur in their lab, that they had to do it, and they had to use their union labor, and it was a big, big mess. So, they required us to pay this large sum of money. Later, when they started eliminating a lot of their employees, and they were shrinking things down, and they were getting close to sell, they decided at that point, and I argued with them at the onset, and told them, why don't you just let us use our contractor to build the spur? They said no, so they required us to pay all this money upfront, and then later, when it came right down to it, and their company was trying to shrink some and cut their costs, they decided all they were going to do was install the switch. There's a little turnout switch, they put the main line on a short piece of track. So, they did that, and we picked up from there, and we continued with the construction. So, it wasn't just that they decided to give us a discount, they didn't build the track, we did. So that's where the free time came from.
So you just, is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris, did clear something off, I was sitting here thinking this doubled in price, but there was two lines that you had moved one out by the road, I guess, the turn lane, the crossing was the one of his thirty-seven thousand. Have you spoken to anybody on this from C S X, or this brand was?
Well, we've, we've talked to them and argued with them about it, we told them that the grant had been closed down a long time ago, and that when they refunded money, we had to assume that everything was finished, and that we didn't agree at all with them billing us. We've been somewhat pleasant with each other, but it hasn't produced any difference in the cost.
Yes, he's on the language.
Now, I could call him tomorrow and tell him that Commissioner White wasn't on board at that, and see if that makes a difference.
I mean, I would agree with all you guys, they don't save it from Mike. I mean, this stuff was bad case in the round, he had an invoice, what, a year later.
Let me tell you the bright side, I'm looking for the silver lining here, let me tell you what the bright side is. Bright side is, I don't have to deal with them any longer, because they don't own the track.
Yeah, yeah.
And F G N A's been very good work with.
But at the end of the day, I believe I heard, you said we got one sixty back, that we thought, well, we got the job done cheaper, less, one sixty less than one C S X is going to do it for us. What's not going to be one sixty, technically it's going to be eighty, because they're mailing us an invoice two years later.
I agree, I mean, I'm not trying to be ugly either, but just what we talked about the clearing ahead, I could do a long way towards, towards that, or someone to talk to again. Was this ever in the scope of work originally discussed, Mr. Harris?
I don't remember having a conversation about the relocation of the fiber at the time, it may have been discussed, but it was, it was an expense that was incorporated in the number that they were requiring us to pay upfront. In fact.
Shannon.
Yes, sir.
What was the actual number of that refund, was it five hundred?
Five hundred and eighteen thousand.
It wasn't, it wasn't a hundred and sixty-something, it was over half a million.
That's that figure that says refund.
That's right.
Under seven.
So, again, that's why I was convinced at that time that everything doesn't take care of.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just looking at it now, and maybe I'm just not looking at it right, but it says invoice history total was three hundred and forty thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars. It says our payment history was two hundred and fifty-six thousand eight hundred and three dollars, and we owed them eighty-three thousand, but it says refund was sent at five hundred and eighteen thousand. So I'm curious, is if we only paid two hundred and fifty-six, why we got a half a million back?
The original contract was for seven seventy-five.
Oh, okay.
Back here in the back.
Well, that's where I was, all three of you.
Yeah, we paid the seller. And then at the time they sold, they said, hey, we're not going to be able to finish the work, I mean, I'm going to be in short term, and we're going to send you back the money for the work that we hadn't done.
Yeah, seven seventy-five, two forty-six is what we paid them.
I just, Mr. Chairman, trust me, that's what I'm saying, but the letter just rubs me wrong, I mean, dated July seventh, twenty-two, I mean, saving there for C S X, respects, respectfully. Now, how do you respectfully demand something?
Well, you need to understand that Mr. Vathe and I, and Shannon have been arguing over this with these people for, is it been over a year now? Probably over a year? We haven't, we haven't agreed for over a year. I mean, we're at the point now where, we go to court, and there's a good chance we're going to end up paying this. If we hadn't gotten the five hundred plus back, maybe it would be different, but there's a good chance.
That way, we'll pay it, we'll need two years to come over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll have you winter round this fair boy.
We just sent a letter back, yeah, like you said.
We got a budget, we have, we, we, we have a little budget for that.
We need two years to get it done.
Well, I'm going to tell you, there was another occasion, it's in the minutes, I don't know, I guess Commissioner Fleming was on here, they, they came through, C S X did years ago, and they did a lot of work on crossings, and, I don't know, about five months later, they sent me a bill for all that. Said, we want you to pay for all these crossing repairs. I called them up and said, you sent this to the wrong address. And we had a long conversation, I argued all, I mean, for, I don't know, three, four, five months, and told them that we had a budget and anything like that, that, you know, you can't just send me a bill. We never signed an agreement, haven't even done. And it went on and on, and we didn't pay. And I can say for the record right now, we never did pay that. That never got paid.
No, I, I agree, and I've had some business dealings on private, property, and they go back to the Cowboys and Indian Lakes, I mean, they, they got more power than the government.
Oh, really?
So, I completely understand.
So, Mr. Attorney, you're saying we just need to shut up and bring this, is kind of like a thing?
Whenever you say this.
He will say, he will say that more lawyerly than what you just did.
I ain't no lawyer, so I can say whatever I want to do.
Mr. Chairman, he respectfully demands.
Mr. Chairman, I've already respectfully told them about certain points in mind, you haven't really, I thought about this.
They've been told several times what we really think.
We got it all off our chest, and that was the chairman, all for a question.
Motion by Commissioner Stapleton.
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Lynn, all in favor of I?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Vathe, was that for the record?
I was hoping you weren't listening, you can agree on that.
I'll skip over to wish our items, where there any, we'll be back. Mr. Attorney, I'll skip over you as well, you had your piece, and.
Mr. Aron, thank you.
Good. All right, public comments, comments, I'm sorry, public concern and comments, anyone wishing to speak, can come to the question. Everybody, no questions?
Come on.
Seeing none, we will close public comments. Uh, Mr. Harris, any comments?
Oh, no.
Uh, Mr. Fleming?
No, sir, I don't have any to get up anymore.
Well, you're in a hurry.
Mr. Stapleton. Just continued offering prayers for some folks in the county, they're close to Dallas, that's a beautiful town. Just praying for family and people over town, also those that lost their lives recently. Just ask everyone once again, these children in prayers, please don't forget us, we're dead in school season.
Who's going?
No, sir, I'm just encouraging everyone to take that speed test, it helps everyone relax on my doing so, there's lots of places you can find a link for what not, do, lead to the speed test. One thing I didn't say earlier when we were talking about that, is that, that information, they give you an option to leave off the last digit of your house number, I believe, Shannon?
Yes, sir.
And the information is secure, so when they ask you for your address, that's pretty much it. Maybe something's on there? No, just three degrees. So, with your, your information, it is confidential with the Office of Department of, I mean, so, if you're leery about submitting that, but if you do want to, you can leave off the last digit of your house number. And I just invite all these fine folks back here at nine o'clock in the morning for Budmore Chops. Ain't that right, nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock.
We drive back. Like, I might just stay.
Go ahead. Mr. Drew?
I'm just kind of echoing what everyone said, appreciate everyone being here, and we have awesome, good people here, ladies, and a lot of people that have been keeping up the prayer, so take that from here, and please, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, did you hit work to Commissioner Lynn after I passed that last meeting once?
No, I wasn't here.
You know what I'm saying?
I thought Jimmy Orson was a long-winded guy.
He did have somebody to see, but you have to get what, what you want.
I hope they look better.
Well, if I don't, Mr. Fleming's going to whip me, so he told me we had to get out of here early tonight, speed it along, so we'll make a motion.
I'm enjoying it, sir.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Lynn, all in favor of I?
Aye.